It'll help if I turn my mic on, sorry about that, let's try that again. I'd like to call the May 6, 2025 meeting of the Stanley County Board of Education to order. We thank you for being here tonight and we, a special welcome to those people who are not in the audience but are available to join us live stream. As we count down the final days of the 2024-25 school year, we're excited to take the time to recognize some truly special people tonight. We're going to celebrate the incredible accomplishment of some students who have worked really hard this year and have shown leadership and have done some things that have really made us proud. Tonight, we also are going to celebrate those who are being honored for their hard work and dedication. And we also want to give a big congratulations to those who we celebrated a little earlier today with the reception, who are headed into the life of retirement. What an exciting time. We are very grateful for the years that you have spent supporting and inspiring our students. But most of all, we want you to know, we are proud of what you've done and that the impact that you have made goes beyond the classrooms that you stood in each day or the halls that you walked at your schools. But before we move on to the next item on our agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion that we amend the agenda for tonight, due to the closed session that we have that we feel like is probably going to be a little lengthy tonight. And also because we have some students that we want to recognize that we've given them a specific time that we need for them to be here. They were having their awards today at their own individual schools tonight, so we felt the need to be able to make the change. So I'd like to entertain a motion that we amend the agenda. What I would like for us to do is move Item C, which is closed session, and Item D, which is open session, to after Item K, which auxiliary services.
Madam Chair, I move to move Item C and Item D to after Item K.
Do I have a second?
I was actually, I don't know if we need to make up, to amend this, but I was actually going to ask if we could move public speaking to after all of the recognition, so that way we can honor everybody, because if, it's a long night and if somebody's been here at 5:45.
So tell me which item you're wanting to move and tell me where you want to move it to, if you can do that for me.
I'm wanting to put G after E.
Yes, okay, yes.
So you're just wanting to move it up, just move it up before the department presentation, correct?
Sorry, hang on one second. No, it would actually be after B, before the closed session.
Okay, well, we've moved the closed session, we've moved that to the end. So closed session will be at the end of the meeting, that's the motion.
Oh, at the end, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yes.
Okay, so yes, after G.
Yeah, it won't be G when we move it, but for right now, yeah.
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay, so you're moving public comments, which is G. You are wanting after the recognitions where we're doing the Skills USA winners, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we would need to amend the motion then, Ms. Gibson.
I second the amendment to the motion.
Is everybody good, does everybody understand what we're doing then?
Can we explain that one more?
Yeah, one more time, please.
One more time, Madam Chair.
Let me make a point of information, that we're doing the presentation recognition, part of the department presentation is recognitions for Skills USA, so it kind of piggybacks off of that, it's not its own.
So number three, E, E3 really falls into F, is that what you're trying to mean?
So yeah, so F, even though it's separate, we are going to recognize the skills kids, because we couldn't bring them all here, there were a bunch of them.
Right.
So that's going to be part of that as well, so it's part of recognition.
The motion on the, I mean, what Ms. Gibson made just does the recognitions and then the department, and then you go into public comments.
After, after all recognitions, yes.
But that's the motion of achievement.
That's really where we are then, that is the motion.
Just moving public comments before the department presentation.
What we're, what we're telling you is that the department presentation, which Mandy Melton is doing, is part of E3, which is the Skills USA winners, that's all together. So you'd really only be moving it, that one, one move right there. So if it's okay, if we can just move the closed session the way the original motion was. Are you good with that, Ms. Almond?
Mark DeShefter withdraw her amendment.
Yes, if that's, that's what you want to do, but there still needs to be a second to the original.
Correct.
Second on the original motion from Mrs. Gibson.
We're going to need for Ms. Almond, too.
I would still like to see public comments put before any other department presentation, after recognition.
Madam Chair, point of information, are we looking at moving the department presentation after public comments?
That's what Mrs. Almond presented, but Mrs. Gibson motioned to just move the closed session to the end, so then it puts all the recognitions together. And then Mrs. Melton presents a CTE on the, the part of the recognition, so they're kind of the guests, and then public comments, as it said, public comments wouldn't have to move.
Where are we in the motion? Mrs. Gibson made a motion, it's been seconded, or it's been amended?
Trying to see if Ms. Almond wants to rescind her motion.
She has an amendment to the original motion, that would have to be rescinded or either voted on, and then we go back to the original motion.
The way the motion stands now, Ms. Almond, with what Ms. Gibson did, is we would do all the recognitions of the students and also our Stanley Stars and our retirees, and then we would go straight into Mandy Melton, which she's part of Skills USA, and then it would go straight into public comments.
So just for clarification, Ms. Melton is being a part of the presentation, basically?
Yes.
Okay, because that wasn't clear in what was on the agenda, so that's why I'm asking this. Okay, so I am good with public comments after all the presentations.
If you can rescind your.
I rescind my motion, yes.
All right.
So we're back to the original motion, does anyone need for me to restate that? If not, then we just need a second.
I think we're good. I think you're, I think you're, I think you're good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes, so we have amended the agenda. Now I need the approval of the agenda as it stands. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. We're going to move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, I feel like I need that. Care of that for us tonight. Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
With this being Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to share with everyone a poem titled, "Why God Made Teachers," and it's by Kevin William Huff. When God created teachers, He gave us special friends to help us understand His world and truly comprehend the beauty and the wonder of everything we see, and become a better person with each discovery. When God created teachers, He gave us special guides to show us ways in which to grow, so we can all decide how to live and how to do what's right instead of wrong, to lead us so that we can lead and learn how to be strong. When God, or why God, created teachers, in His wisdom and His grace, was to help us learn to make our world a better, wiser place, and we thank God for our teachers. Let My teaching fall like rain and My words descend like dew, like showers on new grass, like abundant rain on tender plants, and this is from Deuteronomy 32, verse 2. Let us pray. Dear God, we come to You with thankful hearts for the many gifts and blessings that You've given to us. We give thanks for all of the teaching and learning that has taken place in our schools, talents that have been shared, challenges that have been faced, and for friendships that have been formed. Lord, rain down Your blessing upon our teachers, staff, administrators, students, and families, and all that are being recognized this evening for their diligent work, accomplishments, and achievements. Lord, as our school year comes to a close, our hearts are filled with gratitude. Watch over our students, our families, our teachers, and staff, as they embark on summer adventures and keep them safe from harm. Be with our board as we enter into our business meeting, as we seek Your wisdom and guidance in any discussions and decisions that are made for Stanley County schools. May Our words always reflect Your glory. In Your name we pray, amen. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda are recognitions, and we're going to start with Stanley Stars, Mr. Dennis and Ms. Hedrick will be taking care of those for us tonight.
Good evening, Board, and to all of our guests. Each month, Stanley County Schools proudly recognizes exceptional certified and classified employees as Stanley Stars. This month, as we honor the following individuals, I'll ask that they come up front to receive their certificate from Dr. Dennis, and then if you can kind of pull over in this area, we're going to take a group picture before getting congratulated by the Board. Up first, we would like to bring Cheryl Owen from Millingport Elementary. Ms. Owen joined Millingport in August 2022, returning from retirement to share her expertise. She is a veteran educator who readily embraces new approaches and remains focused on student well-being. Ms. Owen approaches and remain, oh, sorry, Ms. Owen approaches and remains focused, oh, gracious, I can't read this evening. Ms. Owen challenges students to think critically and develop strong reasoning skills through engaging instructional activities. She is a collaborative team player who contributes to the school's success. Please give Ms. Owen another round of applause. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Joe McKenzie to join us.
Yes, sir. Take your time.
Mr. McKenzie has been an integral part of Millingport since May 2015. He consistently exceeds expectations, arriving early to ensure a welcoming environment for both students and staff. He greets each child during morning car rider duty, offering assistance and a friendly smile. Mr. McKenzie handles unexpected situations with efficiency and dependability. He is highly respected by his colleagues, students, and families alike. Please give Mr. McKenzie another round of applause. Next, I would like to invite Mr. Strube from West Stanley High School. Mr. Strube has enriched West Stanley High School for two and a half years with his engaging art instruction. He is a strong advocate for his students, dedicating time to various art department activities, including the marching band and drama productions. He actively showcases student work with the community. Mr. Strube also serves as the chair of the school improvement team, providing leadership to his colleagues. Please give him a round of applause. Next, I would like to call Andy Shutt to the front. Ms. Shutt has supported students in the OCS classroom at West Stanley High School for two years. She tailors her support to individual student needs, recognizing strengths and addressing weaknesses to promote growth. Displaying dedication and leadership, she also stepped in as a coach for an athletic team mid-season. Please give her a round of applause. We would also like to recognize this evening in abstention, our staff members from Stanley Academy Learning Center. Morgan Baldwin is their EC teacher there, and Anthony Keeling is their custodian, and I'll be sure to share with them the kind words that their staff shared with me when they nominated both of them for Stanley Stars. So if we can have one more round of applause for our Stanley Stars this month. And I know that the Board would like, if you guys will start down here, I know they want to say thank you personally, so they'll, you can kind of just walk through, and they're going to lean over and shake each of your hands. Kim's going to go through them for you. We are now going together to honor and celebrate the remarkable careers of our retiring school staff. It is no exaggeration to say that the heart of any school isn't just in its buildings or programs, but in the people who fill its halls each day. Teachers, you were the architects of minds, the guides who ignite curiosity and foster a love of learning. You don't just teach subjects, you teach students how to think, how to persevere, and how to believe in themselves. Your dedication extends far beyond lesson plans and grades, touching lives in profound ways. And to our invaluable support staff, from the office to the cafeteria, from the library to the maintenance crew, you are the unsung heroes who keep our schools running smoothly and safely. Your efforts create the nurturing environment where students can thrive. Each of you plays a critical role in shaping the student experience. You provide comfort, support, and stability. To our retirees, thank you. Thank you for your countless hours, your unwavering commitment, and the positive impact you've had on generations of students. Your legacy will live on in the lives you've touched. We wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement, filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures. When I call your name, if you'll please come see Dr. Dennis and receive a token of our appreciation, these are personalized, so if you will please check it before you leave this evening, if it's not right, see me or Kim. And then also, once you get your gift, we're going to ask that you line up across the front, and then at the end, we'll go through and shake the Board's hands. So first, we would like to welcome Sue Ellen Alexander. Please give her a round of applause. Kimberly Napier, Napier, I always say it wrong. Did we overlook any retirees? Please give them one more resounding round of applause. So as you go through, we ask that you shake the Board members' hands, I know they want to thank you so very much for your service. Kim Thompson in our department commented tonight about how much knowledge is getting ready to walk out of the door, and so we, we recognize that, and, you know, retirement is certainly a sweet new beginning for each of you, but we will be missed and remembered for sure, so thank you very much. Thank y'all.
Congratulations.
You tried!
Work on that one.
So on Saturday, I was hitting balls. And then on Sunday, we hit a shorter field.
And you hit a ball? Oh.
No, but when we played the short. Like, I would have hit the ball on the short field that I hit on the long field.
Snorting. Called snorting. Laugh snorting.
No, they got a... And then, if they were plumbers, it'd be peeing.
Okay, we're going to continue. I apologize for the little bit of delay, but we were trying to just make sure we had all of our students here. We want to make sure we're able to recognize them. So next on the agenda is Continued Recognitions. Dr. Dennis and Mr. Lynn Plummer will be taking care of those for us tonight. And we'll start out with the Regional Science Fair winner. I believe she was scheduled to be recognized last month, and she was a little under the weather, so we brought her back in this month in order to be able to recognize her.
Well, I'm glad it took us until this month to get her because not only did she place in the District Science Fair and the Regional Science Fair, but she was also among the top students at the State Science Fair. She received an exemplary award, which is the highest you can get as an elementary school student in that level, which means of the almost 100 projects that were presented, she was in the top 20 of those science fair projects. So congratulations to Ms. Tori Edwards.
Mr. Plummer, I would add, knowing her parents very well, that she definitely got this from her mother.
Good to know.
We will continue on, Mr. Plummer.
Absolutely. Another big honor that came to us just a couple weeks ago. The Morehead Cane Foundation has been pleased to announce the members of its Class of 2029, who will begin their undergraduate journeys at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill this fall. The 75 scholars represent 22 North Carolina counties and 19 U.S. states and territories, including North Carolina. They are from six countries and were nominated by schools in eight countries... Excuse me, they're from six countries and nominated by schools from eight countries. Their academic interests range from biology and political science to literature, languages, and the arts. They join a thriving cohort of thinkers, leaders, creators, and adventurers at UNC Chapel Hill, empowered by the Morehead Cane Program to set their potential free. In addition to a fully funded undergraduate scholarship to one of the nation's foremost public research universities, scholars gain access to a network of peers and mentors, challenging internships, and summer experiences, and an opportunity to travel the world. We are pleased to announce that our very own Vincent Gregory has been awarded this prestigious scholarship. Vincent will graduate this spring from Albemarle High School while earning an Associate of Arts degree from Stanley Community College. He will receive the prestigious Amy Ruth Kelly Leadership Award for Outstanding Leadership, and is a member of the National Honor Society and Phi Theta Kappa. A gifted athlete, Vincent has been a three-time football team captain and earned all-conference honors in football, wrestling, and track and field. In 2024, he received the Heart of a Champion Award from the NCHSAA. For his sportsmanship and dedication, Vincent is deeply committed to civic responsibility. He serves as a teen attorney with the Stanley County Teen Court. This role allows him to advocate for fairness and respect among his peers, reflecting his passion for justice. His community service also includes mentoring and coaching in the Special Olympics. As an artist, Vincent creates Godzilla-themed claymation products... projects, which he shares on YouTube. At Carolina, he plans to study psychology with a minor in social and economic injustice, aiming for law school. He is the son of Dr. Lamonica Barnum and Mr. Preston Gregory of Albemarle, North Carolina. Congratulations, Mr. Vincent Gregory.
Vincent. Vincent, if I could get you to come down and shake the board's hand. And Tori, we let you skip away. If you could come down also and just walk through. If you could just come this way, Vincent, and walk down through and shake the...
And finally, I would like to recognize Ms. Mandy Melton. She is going to talk about Skills USA with our CTE students.
Good evening, board members. 67 CTE students from the four traditional high schools traveled to Greensboro to compete in the North Carolina Skills USA competition. 23 out of those 67 attending placed first through fifth and received their awards onstage. Tonight, we would like to honor the first-place winners, some who competed in a national contest, and will be traveling to Georgia next month to represent the state of North Carolina. I'd like you all to come up with your advisor and stand up front when I call your name. First in auto maintenance and light repair, which was a national contest, Ethan Kescheck and his advisor, Mickey Mooney, from West Stanley High School. First in firefighting intermediate, Jasmine Brown with her advisor, Al Beasley, Albemarle High School. First in masonry estimating, Jackson Kimery and his advisor, Stephen Honeycutt, West Stanley High School. First place in masonry one, Henry Smith and his advisor, Matt Almond, from North Stanley High School. Could not be here tonight because they are working. Could not be here tonight because they are working. First place in poster, Michelle Starnes and her advisor, Amy Crisco, Albemarle High School. First in quiz bowl, which is a national contest, Erin Bigford, Rala Chul... I'm gonna mess her name up. Okay, Gloria Robert, Claire Cheryl, and Hadley Smith and their advisor, Stephen Honeycutt, from West Stanley High School. First in baking and pastry, which is also a national contest, Hadley Herring and her advisor, Katie Love, from West Stanley High School. I would like to congratulate these students and their advisors for all the hard work they put into getting these kids to Skills USA state competition. It is a three-day event, so there's a lot packed in a few days, and I think they all represented Stanley County very well. And if you want to start, Mr. Mooney, and just walk across and shake the board members' hands? Ooh, her name, Rula. I couldn't get through Rula. In addition to our Skills USA winners, I would like to present a few career and technical education highlights for this school year. Some quick facts. Stanley County Schools has 67 different CTE course offerings. 1,518 students, 68.8% of our students, have taken or enrolled in a high school CTE course, filling 3,120 seats. 671 students, 45.9%, have taken a middle school CTE exploration class. In the fall of 2024, students have earned 2,563 workplace credentials, and that was 75% of our credential potential for that semester. Forty-six students are participating in the internship program, and seven students are participating in the pre-apprenticeship program. Here are just a few of our interns. You see, we have a wide variety, lots of different businesses, but Gavin Locklear from Locust Home and Garden, Nico Johnson from Harwood's Mobile Home Service, and Ansley Austin from Juneberry Ridge. We are happy that this school year, we did introduce three new CTE courses: Interior Design Studio at Albemarle High School, Electrical Trades II at North Stanley High School, and Natural Resources at South Stanley High School. We start our career development with students entering the 7th grade. They take multiple personality and learning style assessments. They attend our 7th grade Steer Your Career Fair and take a deep dive in those careers they are interested in. That is when the students will begin their career plan, and we notify the parents. In 8th grade, the students are allowed to attend luncheon learns. They retake those same assessments, practice goal-setting and introduction to soft skills, and also reality check and exploration activities. Again, the plan is updated. In high school, the students revisit and update their plans each year. They explore through different CTE courses. They explore different careers through NC Careers and build a career portfolio that they can take with them upon leaving high school and graduating. One of our big events that started off the year was the Be Proud, Be Pro Bus. This is a national workforce development initiative. It is a simulation bus where students are allowed to participate in various simulations with different trade careers. That is something we have been alternating back and forth with our middle and high schools. This year was high school, and next year it will be back at the middle schools. Our next event was Manufacturing Day. This year, we added middle school. We have been doing a high school manufacturing day for many years, but this year, we decided to start exposing a little bit earlier. Students toured local businesses, the community college, and learned more about what manufacturing is in Stanley County. Our next event that we have kind of taken ownership over is the Veterans Day celebrations. Each high school has a Veterans Day celebration that veterans can attend. We learned our lesson very quickly. The first year, we had them all on the same day. The veterans did not like that. They wanted to be able to go to all of them. It is a great, great time for the students and the veterans. The students line the halls and clap for the veterans as they walk in. Our National Technical Honor Society spearheads this. Also, Military Awareness Week just happened at West Stanley High School. As you know, West Stanley is the home to the JROTC, so we took the opportunity to expose kids specifically to military careers throughout that week. The Steer Your Career is our 7th grade career fair I mentioned earlier. It's held at the Livestock Arena now, so they get to see the big trucks and experience all the different businesses. And that's when we really start getting them into career planning. Also, Middle School Luncheon Learns. You heard me reference in the 8th grade year. This is when we really target students and their career interest and bring in speakers to them and let them eat lunch separately with that speaker. Just some of the ones we had are two of our CTE teachers, Joanne Hesley and Mark Tucker, went down to the middle schools to explain their programs. We also had Kenny Holt from Martin Sprocket, Christian Payne from the Community College, and Nate Saltus from Saltus Concrete. And throughout the school year, we have many career-related guest speakers and field trips. A big highlight for us this year was the firefighting program at Albemarle High School, received a $29,000 grant from Providence Volunteer Fire Department for equipment. Another big win for CTE this year. We've been working for the community college for a while, working on this grant and writing it, and it was approved this year. We received a Golden Leaf Grant that allows us to bring community college classes into the high school, taught on our campuses. And the Engineering Technology Program will be at Albemarle High School, and the Information Technology Program will be at South Stanley High School. As you know, we are super proud of our CTSOs, our National Technical Honor Society, our Future Farmers of America, and our Skills USA, all very active in their chapters. One thing we did to kind of end the school year and aid registration for the 8th graders going into 9th graders is we printed a Pathways for Success booklet that went home with every 8th grader, outlining the career choices and courses and instructors in the CTE department of the high school that they would be attending. And last but not least, just today, we had our Senior Career Fair that's put on in conjunction with the Community College and NC Works. This is where we connect students who are looking to go into the workforce directly after graduation with employers who are looking to hire immediately. And I have to say, that was a very successful event, and almost every employer that participated in the fair commented on the skills that our students have and how well-prepared and well-spoken they were today. So there are lots of things we do in CTE, but that's just the high points. So you want to have any questions?
I did want to say, Ms. Melton, that my father-in-law is a WWII vet, and he definitely loved being able to go to all of the high schools for Veterans Day. This year, I did hear that, because he was not able to hit all of those. He had to pick the ones that he wanted to go to. So thank you for doing that and for all that you do.
Well, we kind of took ownership of it by accident, I guess, and we have ran with it, because it is one of the most phenomenal days you'll ever be a part of, to see the children really showing their respect and reverence for our veterans.
I was gonna say, I didn't get to go to the Veterans Day breakfast, but I did get to see the students preparing the food for Veterans Day breakfast, and they looked like they were having a great time. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for the presentation.
I have a question. Is the books... You said that was the first year that you've done this?
It is.
And that went to every 8th grader?
Every 8th grader in the county, yes.
Great, and what does that book show them?
It shows them what courses are offered at their high schools. We include pictures of instructors, because we think that's important for them to go home and show parents. And maybe they know this instructor, or they know that instructor. We have descriptions of every course to kind of have something we can put in their hands, and they can take home and discuss with their parents before they register for classes the following year.
That's great. Thank you so much. I think that's really helping kids go ahead and get a head start on what they like, and that's awesome. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for letting me do what I do.
Real quick, Mandy.
Yes, sir.
You stole my thunder that one day. I tried to get in touch with you about that new program in Stanley, and you were part of the people that started that thing up. I was just so impressed with that. And you forgot to mention those Veterans' breakfasts. The food's pretty darn good.
The food is pretty good. We worked on that grant for quite a while. We were a little unsure. If you've never been involved in a Golden Leaf Grant, it was my first time. There is a lot to do with that grant. So kind of tried to keep it under wraps till we had it locked down.
Ms. Melton, I want to say too about the Veterans Day. That was a highlight for me, especially when I was able to bring someone in my family who has been diagnosed with dementia. But he was just thrilled with those students lined up in the hallway and many saluting him, and all the flags that the students were waving. I know that he told me afterwards, he said, "I really felt the patriotism. I really felt honored." I don't think he ever wanted to leave. He would have stayed at Albemarle High School all day if they would have let him. And I know that a few of us up here on the board just recently attended the FFA banquet at North Stanley High School, and that is huge. And I know that you are a real part of that and that organization. And those students just do a marvelous job, as well as their instructor, their teacher.
They do. We have a lot to be proud of in CTE.
We absolutely do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again, Ms. Melton. That's all of our recognitions for tonight. We actually will be kind of going into the business portion of our meeting. I know some of you came from other things that you had at your schools, so we understand you may need to get back to those. So if you do need to leave, we do understand that. But I just wanted to let you know sort of where we were in our agenda. We'll give that just a few moments. We're gonna move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month is part of at least one rarely-scheduled board meeting. We'll set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by the majority vote of the board. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. I do want to remind you that we do have timers on the screen in front of you at the podium and also on the two large monitors that you see from the ceiling. So our first speaker tonight is Pastor Brown.
It's been a great night, hasn't it? Already, it's been a great night. You don't have to respond. I'm sorry. It's been a great night. I just want to take just a few moments of your time and ask for some leadership by the school board on an initiative to have the national motto, "In God We Trust," placed on our school buses. There are a couple of ways that this can be done. You could help on this. One is to write the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and ask if it would be permitted by them to put "In God We Trust" on our school buses. The other thing that can be done by you is to contact our respective assembly members and ask if they would introduce a bill that would do the same thing. The national motto is everywhere. It is in our courthouses, it is on our currency, it is on our county vehicles. And as I was looking at some of the Veterans Day and some of those men who have given up a great deal, I think it would be a great honor to them to see "In God We Trust" on our school buses. So I would ask if you would take a leadership role on that. I'm not going to take three minutes, which is unusual for a Baptist pastor, but I'm going to go ahead, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Brown. Next, we have Bill Schaefer.
Board members, I'm speaking today to this board to reiterate to you that the people of Stanley County are increasingly becoming aware of the attitudes and actions of certain members of the board that seems to demonstrate that certain board members and their treatment of the people is as an afterthought in everything that this board is doing, virtually everything this board is doing. You'll recall from the last meeting that I was pretty scathing of this school board and the things that they were doing and the things that I had learned over time. And so you can imagine that when I look at the agenda for this evening and I see that public comment had been moved to almost near the end of the night, it seemed to me to be a clear message from this board that it doesn't really want to hear from the public or for the public to make comments at these meetings. Moving public comment to so late in the meeting almost guarantees that the public will throw up its hands and give up and not show up to offer comment in any form because of how late this board runs its meetings and how it treats public comment. Now, while I appreciate one of the board members making a motion to change the agenda and trying to put public comment, first and foremost, on the minds of the board members, it's crystal clear to me and others that this board is attempting to reduce public comments to zero by making it almost impossible for parents and the taxpaying public to count on an agenda, but also to stay long enough to offer public comment on the very things that I and countless parents and taxpayers have had to say about anything that this board does, what it has done, or what the people want the board to do in representing the people's determined will with regard to their school systems. This action that you've taken treats parents and families as afterthoughts. And the message is, you're not as important as pumping sunshine up everybody's butt. This message is, the board will use its own self-serving policies and the tools of government to delay, dull, chill, and hammer down a taxpaying parent's resolve to address this board by sending them to the basement of school board business. What you're doing is tyranny in its infant form, and the people are wise to it, and they're becoming wise to it. I've long said that freedom begins right here, down on the ground in Stanley County in the good old USA. Everything that our founding fathers stood for as it relates to representation of the people and the people's right to steer the ships of destiny begins right here, down on the ground. But conversely, it is also right here, down on the ground, in Stanley County in the good old USA, where the vines of an arrogance and tyranny can begin to grow. And eventually, if we allow for it, and we put up with it, and we tolerate it, the tentacles of this tyranny will suffocate the voices of liberty and the determined will. And the first signs of this will be what you did tonight with this agenda.
Mr. Schaefer, your three minutes are up.
And with regard to moving public comment to essentially what is the end of the night, some of you may think you've got more important business to attend to in these scripted meetings that you hold here, but I'm here to tell you that there is no business more important than that of providing time for the people to speak to the business of this school as they see fit. Thank you.
Next, we have Terrence Harris.
I come to talk about Albemarle Middle School. And as you all know, I'm pretty self-structured around that school. A lot of stuff go on. I'm there, you know. But I need y'all help. Like, it can't be done without this board right here. Like, lock-ons, let's go down to this school, and let's fix this school. There's no way some of the stuff is going on. Now, I just realized, we had a bunch of teachers retiring, three or four of them were my teachers. And I realize I'm old. But when you got problems at that middle school like we got, we got to get it fixed. I say it all the time. That school is on the corner of Baiting Road and the Northeast Connector. Why did they build the Northeast Connector? Push all the traffic out the city limits that way to put them on 52. Who sees that school? You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? Like, it's a lot of stuff go on in that school y'all don't see going on with these kids and everything. Like, if I brought up some of it, you'd be like, "Oh, my God, yeah." When you're riding home and you, a kid shows you something in his book bag, he been on campus all day with it. Where the school resource officer at? Where the metal detectors at the front door so my little niece is safe? My little cousins are safe? You know what I'm saying? Like, I ain't going to bring up what happened, but it ain't fair. It ain't fair to some of these other kids, you know? We can't even get teachers over here, why? Ain't enough for sentence for them. Throw that money out there. I mean, I worked at BRS for fifteen years, and Matt Beringer said, "If you line the tunnel with hundred-dollar bills, they gonna go to it. They gonna go down that front of hundred-dollar bills." Put the money over there like you do the rest of the schools. I mean, I came and asked at the beginning of the year, I said, "Can we get our sign fixed?" You know what they said? Well, the cords broke outside. How hard is it to call the city of Alamoah and say, "Hey, can we borrow y'all punch to punch a line across the road so we can put another cable under here?" I mean, I'll go over there and do it myself. It ain't hard, set the grade, let it punch. But guess what? I know the EOGs is coming up this week, when I ride by there. I didn't know they're gonna have a sneaker ball this week when I ride by there. We ain't got to get on social media and put it on there. And another thing is, our football stuff is terrible. They playing with equipment that come from Central, when that used to be the middle school. And all they do is refurbish helmets, refurbish helmets. Well, what's gonna happen when one of these kids get hit? And he on his way to Charlotte because he got a pretty serious concussion. I don't know if y'all know it or not, North Stanley got a big boy up there. He hit you, you gonna feel it. You know what I mean? So, we got to lock arms some kind of way and get this school fixed over here. Like, the rest of the schools, they may have problems, but I don't see them. I see these problems. And I know right now we don't have a principal. So, how long do it take us to get a principal so we can get some things organized? Like, it's a fight, you know what I mean? Y'all just go over there and look at it. We changed in a building that you put a gator in. Can you imagine putting forty kids in a room that you put a gator in? With helmets? We don't have nothing, nothing at all. You know what I mean? So, help us out. That's all I can ask for. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next on our agenda is consent agenda. You'll see you have three agendas, um, three minutes listed there for April 1st meeting, April 15th, two of those for the April 15th meeting, one for a special call, and the other for a work session. So, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Those are approved. Next, we have committee reports. Finance with Mr. Lewis.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This will be brief. Uh, the committee met on April 9th. Central Elementary had received some funding from the state. It's not a grant, it's not anything they apply for. It's a PRC code, uh, part of the allotment formulas. Um, but this was for monies for an economically disadvantaged school and for the achievements that they had made. So, part of the statute or the, um, the funding formula allows the principal, the school committee to make decisions on how they want to award that, and the board just simply votes on it, uh, and that's within the law. Uh, but it was set up to provide, I think board members, you have that in front of you. Uh, they, the school wanted to focus on their staff and their teachers and the retention. Uh, and so you see some bonuses, some math resources, media center resources, uh, but it was really focused around curriculum and, uh, retainment and, and rewardment of, of the staff. I bet it was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand and eighty-eight dollars.
That was Central, not Alamoah Middle, Central.
Central Elementary, yes.
Not the middle school.
Not the middle school, yep.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep. Uh, so you can look it up, it's PRC 251. There's just some stipulations by the state on who can achieve that, but they did very well in their growth scores. I think Dr. Dennis is for mainly taking where you have eighty percent or more of the kids economically disadvantaged, and they exceeded growth as defined by the state. Uh, that, this was approved out of committee. Um, do you need a motion, or is that going to be your motion?
We'll just need a second for that. So, he is bringing that out of committee as a motion to approve PRC 251 as presented. So, we just need a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is approved. The next committee report is policy with Ms. Alman.
So, it looks like, um... There's a couple of policies that are in final approval. Um, can I just go ahead and pull the three of those out that, um, we're looking at to rescind? Okay, I, I can just start with those three, and then I'll, I'll finish with the others. Um, so there's three policies, um, that we, um, or... There's two policies that I would like to rescind, and then there's a board member that is...
Two policies to go back to committee.
Table, you want to...
Yeah, to table to go back to committee.
Okay, okay, and, okay. So, that is Policy 4150, which is school assignment, um, to go back to committee. And so, do we need to make...
Can we just do all three of those together?
If, if we can, that's kind of what I was asking for. Okay.
Well, let's just do, if you'll, if you'll tell those three all together, and then you can, we can send those back, table those, send those back to the committee.
Okay, so it's Policy fifty, or 4150, um, Policy 7920, and 7921. Um, there's just some, there's some, and to explain to the public, there's some wording in them. Um, for 4150, um, there's, you know, we're in the process of transfers, and, uh, there's some wording in the bottom of the policy that just, it's just too cloudy, and it makes it very confusing at this point in time, and it's just not good timing. Um, so we're going to revisit that, and then, um, for Policies 7920 and 7921, there's also wording, um, that, uh, we need to go back and look at and, and revisit as well.
Do you need a second to...
Yes. Okay. Just take the motion to send those back to committee. So, it's Policy 4150, Policy 7920, and Policy 7921.
Hold on one, hold on one second. So, the committee has not met to discuss rescinding. So, I would need an individual motion and a second from two board members to table.
So, I, I make a motion to table 4150, 7920, and 7921 due to wording issues to go back to committee, to be reworded, and then be tabled again for thirty days.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam, I'd like to call for, uh, division of the House on that vote to, to clarify the, the, uh, the vote, but also we had a motion. It's actually a call for, uh, or a call of order. We had a motion and a second and no discussion. I'd like to just answer to one, one point real quick.
Okay. I'm sorry.
This Megan's, uh, Megan Alman's trying to own all that, and it's not on her. I'm on that committee.
Yeah.
I didn't see the one issue till today, when I looked at our minutes again, that it's, we want to make things, make sure we get things right because we, we live and die on policy. This is a board that, yes ma'am, we live and die on policy. We want to make sure we get things right, and we don't have necessarily a battle law. We live and die on policy, so we wanted to get the wording exactly right. As a member of that committee, I apologize to the chairperson and the board that it just wasn't right. The other, the other one, I had seen that, uh, last week and thought, there's, the wording's ambiguous, and if anybody wants to find a way to make, uh, the public med, have gray areas, have things that are not easily defined. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Swarrenson. So, next, we'll need to go back, Ms. Alman then, to all of the other policies, the ones that you had listed before.
Yes.
And, thank you. Since we made some changes to those, we'll need a motion and a second on those also.
So, go ahead and make a motion.
You want to, yeah, and read those out if you...
Okay, so, make a motion to rescind, or what?
No, you're gonna...
Everything else was approved by committee, so she's pulled it out. So, you'll just need a second when she reads the other ones.
You're just gonna look through the ones that are there for approval.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Other than the three that we just pulled.
So, Policy 3450, Policy 7430, Policy 7510, Policy 7805, Policy 7820. I'm sorry, yes, Policy 7820, Policy 7821. And I need a second on that.
So, I make a motion that we, uh, have final approval for 7340, 7430, 7510, 7805, 7820, and 7821.
Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Any discussion on that? I'm sorry, any discussion? Mr. Swarrenson? Are you good? Okay.
We had a second because I thought you motioned. It's kind of the same motion, but...
Well, it didn't come out of policy because it was changed, so you have to have a motion and a second. So, I made a motion. We do need a second, yes.
Okay, yeah. All right. So, any discussion?
No, we're good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Those are approved.
And then we have just a few to be rescinded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's Policy 5125, Policy 5370, Policy 5620, and Policy 5500.
And, and I will second that, and that is out of committee, so that, that should be okay.
So, we have the motion out of committee and a second by Ms. Poplin. Any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you.
Policy is not easy, so...
Wow, and anytime we switch it up on you, that does help.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Alman, I appreciate that. So, next on the agenda is superintendent update. Dr. Dennis? But she has it under superintendent update, so...
Okay, well, I gotta come up with things. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So, uh, as far as the facility naming, um, Policy 9300, which is the naming of facilities, and also includes athletic facilities, uh, says that if a individual, you know, from, you know, the school, an individual school makes a recommendation, that it comes through my office and it goes to the board, as long as I don't see a big issue with it. So, the one I'm bringing you today is from South Stanley, and sorry, I had it dialed up here, here it is. Um, and it comes from the athletic director, Sean Whitley. And, uh, he says that Coach Terry Tucker's putting the step down from baseball at the end of the season, and he would love to have the field named in his honor. He's been at South Stanley since 2008/9. He's won seven conference championships, five regional championships, three state championships during his tenure as head baseball coach. So, the naming of facilities would need board approval if the board would like to take that up. And, uh, I've, I've spoken to the principal as well, and she, uh, she endorses this as well.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the name change to the Terry Tucker Field.
Okay. Do I have a motion for Mr. Swarrenson? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is approved. Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Do you have anything else?
Madam Chair. I have one thing that goes along with this, and I'm going to ask Dr. Dennis if he will, um, reach out. I know that a while back, um, West Stanley High School also wanted to rename, um, and I think it had to deal with softball. So, I believe at that time that I had heard from Emily Smith. I, I have, I do not know that any, that anything came down from the principal, Mr. Rhodes. So, I'm just going to ask, because this is on this same topic, and I know it was, um, mentioned, um, brought to our attention. Dr. Dennis, if you would, um, contact, uh, Mr. Rhodes, and if you'll contact Emily Smith, because I know that this dealt with softball. Thank you.
Uh, the only other updates I have were just, uh, as far as stuff coming up, you know, as we've spoke about earlier, uh, the end of the year's coming, and we start testing here real soon. Um, as far as some days, uh, this is, of course, Teacher Appreciation Week. National Teacher Appreciation Day is today. And School Principals' Day was the first. School Lunch Here Day was the second. The 18th is Speech Pathologist Day, and that's about it for the month. Thank you.
So, next, we have Auxiliary Services. Mr. Keith Benton.
Madam Chair, board members. Um, I see on our first topic there is, uh, Alamoah High School's freezer bid. At this time, I recommend, uh, I don't have a recommendation for that. So, just wanted to update y'all on that.
So, you do not have any information on Alamoah High School freezer for tonight?
Right.
However, Mr. Benton, it is something that we've got to replace.
Yes, ma'am, we need to move towards it. Um, we need to move towards replacing that freezer. They don't have enough storage there, plus it's creating other issues going in internal of the building, and, um, there, there needs to be some modifications done in that area.
And that's going to be taking place real soon.
Excuse me?
That's going to have to take place real soon.
Yeah, we need to move forward on it pretty fast. Okay. All right, uh, I'll move down to the second item, Oakboro Entrance. Um, uh, I'm here this evening to, uh, seek your approval for the Oakboro STEM Phase II wall project. That's the front entrance of the school. We received two contractors doing work, uh, for bids on this job. Um, I'm requesting your approval for the total bid, including the alternate, of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Um, that is a contingency also built in that of thirty thousand dollars. The alternate also includes replacing the, uh, doors in the front of the building, the storefront doors that go down the wall, uh, at the entrance where they're doing work. We might as well do it and replace it at that time. So, I will need action on that, please.
So, that's coming to us from Mr. Benton for a bid from Stokes Construction.
Yes, ma'am.
For the Oakboro Entrance bid. The total is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, and that does include the alternate.
That does include the alternate.
Just for clarification, is, is this the lower of the two bids?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I entertain a motion for that.
So, move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I just wanted to make one update. It wasn't on my list, but School Nurses' Day is tomorrow. I didn't want to forget them.
We do not want to forget the nurses, for sure. So, next on our agenda is a closed session. Um, so, entertain a motion to go into closed session. What I would like to do is have a, for us to have a ten-minute recess and then go straight into closed session. I know you guys need, um, just a moment. Um, but a motion to enter into closed session to discuss personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. Student matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A1. Attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3. An acquisition of real property, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 005A. Do I have a motion? We go into closed session.
So, I move.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. We're in closed session.